We'll call the meeting of the planning board to order. Stall, stand, and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
If anybody's gonna speak to the, to the board, they have to be sworn in.
You swear the testimony you are about to give is true, so help you God.
I'll open the citizens' open forum, but are you planning to speak? I guess not, since you didn't. Then I'll close the open forum and we'll move right on in there. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of, uh, what was it, April the 10th, 2019?
The motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Michelle, it's all you.
Hey, this is an annexation request located in Incorporated Pinellas County in West Oldsmar at 3136 Huron Avenue. Property is located in Incorporated Pinellas County. It's currently developed with a duplex. The city has annexed 238 of the 419 West Oldsmar parcels to date. This includes the formal mobile home park, which is approved for 164 single-family attached dwelling development and is currently under construction. Property contains approximately .17, .17 acres. It's located in West Oldsmar, Section 1, Block 17, Lot 727. It is contiguous to the boundaries of the city and city services are available. Access is available from Huron Avenue to SR 580. Water and sewer service is available to the property through the city. City has water system capacity of 2 million gallons per day and the average flow is 1.342 million gallons per day. The Oldsmar wastewater treat, treatment plan has capacity of 2.25 million gallons per day and the 2018 average annual flow of 1.635. Solid waste collection is provided by an outside contractor. The city pays the contractor and bills its residents a flat fee for collection. The city has an interlocal agreement with Pinellas County for the disposal of solid waste. Notice of this annexation request has been forwarded to Safety Harbor in Pinellas County. The city can provide water and sewer, has the ability to provide solid waste fire, EMS, recreation, library services, and based on the above discussion, staff recommends that city council authorize the city attorney to prepare an ordinance annexing West Oldsmar, Section 1, Block 17, Lot 27.
I think we'll start with Susan. You have any questions?
No questions at all.
I have no question.
Nope.
Nope. Yeah, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we recommend approval of ANN 1904 to city council.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
This is the Oakleaf commercial plat request located 3500 Tampa Road. Even though I do have some troubles with my north and my south, the legal description is, is correct in the agenda item. It's a request for a replat of 1.7 acres, more or less a commercial parcel into two lots located on the south side of Tampa Road, west of Oakwood Boulevard and north of Pepper Tree Drive. Lot 1 will be the site of the tidal wave car wash and Lot 2 will have a standalone SunTrust ATM. It was previously developed with a SunTrust bank with a drive-through ATM which is being demolished. Will create two lots with the city land use of residential office retail and zoning of ROR Residential Office Retail District. Lot 1, which I said was tidal wave, will be 1.449 acres and Lot 2 SunTrust ATM will be .25 acres. Staff discussed the replat request at the August 13th, 2019 Technical Review Committee and occurred that prior to recording, the plat must be meet all conformity review comments. Staff recommends that the planning board evaluate and submit a recommendation to the city council on the Oakleaf commercial plat. Completion of conformity review has occurred and the city has received no letters of objection from utility companies.
John, if you have any questions?
No questions.
Bob?
Um, I don't have, I don't have any real questions anything. The other thing, I just wanted to ask if I'm reading this correctly. The lot number 2, the lot number 2 where the ATM is going is 129 and a half feet by 48 feet. Am I reading that right?
Let me get a bigger one. Let me see. I believe it's correct, but let's just look.
Thing, yeah, I'm just saying, it's not a lot of land for an ATM.
It is, but we also did require landscaping around it during the site plan process to make it a little bit more, you know, amenable and to make the drive aisles, you know, function correctly. And that, it actually, it had previously, I mean, technically the lands are individually owned already. They were sold as a meets and downs and that's the way they, they sold it and divvied it up.
So this now makes, uh, SunTrust fully responsible for Lot number 2, right? And the car wash fully responsible for Lot number 1.
Right, and they are already, because they are legally owned. This is, you know, the city requested that they do the plat, wasn't it? They said, oh, let's do it. The city always requests to do the plats so that we can assure that if there's any easements or utilities that we need to make sure in place that we're able to do that, because you can do it through the plat process.
I just kind of assumed SunTrust requested it.
No, we requested.
Okay, now that's all.
Pretty much every plat you see is, we, they, people don't really want to do it sometimes because of the money involved and time, but the city usually requests it when it becomes, you know, splitting lots and especially on commercial.
Alright, that's all, I just, just curious.
No, I have no question.
Ross?
Oh yeah, I have a couple. Um, one is in regards to how many entrances are on the lots themselves?
I think it's 2.
Yeah, is there any directly to Tampa, on Tampa Road, or you have to go off Tampa?
No, there's none directly to Tampa Road.
Okay, so they're all?
And nor I do, I don't believe FDOT would have permitted that anyway, because you have the main.
Only off, um, one entrance and one exit then for, for both pla?
You got Pepper Tree and you have Oakleaf. Let's see, I have one, the site plan was approved. I don't think that's sort of more of a one, I don't know if they're gonna say physically one ways in and out. Um, I can't tell from the property. It looks like it's wide enough to be both, but it kind of loops around. Um, if you come in off of Oakleaf, you could go directly to the ATM and I believe and just go right out without going into the car wash. Whereas the other one, you could go directly to the car wash from the other side without going into the ATM.
Okay.
So theoretically, because both lots are individual, they should have their own access.
It, from the drawing, it looks like there's an entrance on Tampa.
No, well, there's an entrance on Oakleaf on Tampa. There's no entrance, there's all landscaping and everything, enhanced landscaping along Tampa Road.
What's the L1 and L2 referring to?
I have no idea what the survey or the?
Oh, oh, okay.
Lot 1 and Lot 2. On Tampa, on Tampa Road, there's an L1 and L2.
That pertains to the line table. If you look, there's a line table and it says L1, 2, L3, L4, L5, giving you the bearings and the lengths.
Okay, I, I just saw the little, uh?
Yeah, I guess there must be more than?
It moves out towards the street, so I didn't know if that was?
Yeah, and what it does is it tells you what the, what the dimensions are, you want to hear the dimensions.
It looked, it looked like an entrance, that's?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's not.
It's not. Yeah. Thank you.
In regards to sidewalks on Oakleaf and Pepper Tree, there will not be sidewalks for pedestrians?
Uh, let's see, I have to go back to the site plan.
Yeah, on Tampa Road, I know there is, and there is on?
There will be a sidewalk on Oakleaf.
Yeah.
And there is a sidewalk.
But what happens is the cars can come in here.
Yeah, there's definitely a sidewalk on Oakleaf and it kind of curves around on Pepper Tree, on the site plan.
And then the actual car wash is gonna be over right over here.
Okay. No, I just wanted to make sure, because I knew, you know, with Tampa Road, I knew they had that in regards to the sidewalk. And then one last question in regards to, um, the creek that's to the side of Lot 1. Is that the, uh, car wash's responsibility to manage and upkeep? Do they have all the way to the creek, or is the city making, um, requests to put landscaping next to the creek?
Does it, creek end, and it depends if it's on their property. If it's on their property, it's their responsibility, but if it's part of Curlew Center, which is adjacent, it would be their responsibility. I know there's a big, you know, empty area between the original SunTrust site and that Curlew, and that's Curlew Center, that, that property. You know, at one point, we would have liked to have had cross-access, but you need both property owners to agree to that.
Okay. So?
Wait, Bob?
I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. So, see, one of, my concern? It's all you now. Oh, thank you. One of my concerns has always been the creek, because the drainage pipe in that creek is in my backyard, of course. And with one of the reasons, like, I, I attended the city council meeting on this, on this and expressed my concerns about the, it being there. But I knew, I, it was gonna be approved and I knew that. But anyway, here's my point. My point is, I think there's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of concrete and pavement on this site and I think there's gonna be a lot of runoff into that creek.
They are supposed to keep it on their own, that's part of the site plan?
I, I know.
Process through the stormwater management. And it's not part of this process, but it is part of the site plan approval process.
Two key words in there, supposed to.
It, it is from your code.
Yeah.
So it is?
But like I said, it might be, it might?
Up to another staff members to assure that that is done during the site plan review. So they're analyzing the stormwater management plans and making sure that, you know, it's functioning, it is proper size, functioning properly, et cetera.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I know that their water has to be recirculated and cleaned and all that, but I'm just talking about the runoff itself.
Now, everybody, every property, whether you're residential or commercial, are supposed to keep your own runoff on your own property.
Right, supposed to.
I, you know, I'm gonna, you know, be real, but it's, the design is?
Yeah, I know.
To be designed that way.
I understand, I understand. That is a good concern, if you think about it, it's a car wash, they're gonna be generating water all the time. Well, as a car wash, they're required to reuse their water. In other words, all that water that they use will go into, I think they're gonna be buried, drums, aren't they?
Something like that, yeah, they have a system that they do recycle.
Thousands of gallons of water. And by, state law says that they have to reuse all of that water that they use, wash the cars with. So it's, it has to go into these, these, these vats and then it has to be reclaimed and then reused in there. So the only thing I'm talking about is the runoff from all the concrete and pavement that's gonna, that's gonna be, you know, up there on that hill. Because if you go by and you look at it, you can see there's, it's, 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 it's gonna go, it's gonna go right to the creek. It's gonna go in Ross's backyard and my backyard, when it backs up.
Yes, this was from, Kathy, you can keep it.
This is from the, uh, presentation. To the landscaping.
Yeah.
You know, even though it's not part of this process, but just since you're asking the questions, that was the approved site plan.
What, uh, what type of car wash is it? Is it, is it self, self-wash, or is it a, where you pull in, they take your car and wash it?
I think it's a pull in, well, they're gonna have vacuums, um, I think it's just a, just a pull in and it goes on the tracks type of deal and you sit through it and come out the other way.
Click on the website, that does exactly how well. So it's not gonna be like the one from the telesout?
Yeah, it's not tan washing and all that, no.
It slopes down towards the creek.
I'm not real happy with that, and I wish they could have put something else in there.
Yeah, well, this, this is the, uh, this is the, uh, whatever, Pepper Tree, what is, what's the name of that little complex there? Pepper Tree something or another?
Pepper Tree Corporate Center or something?
Pepper Tree Professional Center, yeah.
Any else have any questions?
I, I'll chime in on, one of the reasons I got on the planning board was the property was built behind my house and the way they graded.
Yeah, well?
Created a situation where I had erosion, all my pavers, you know, everything.
Runs right on, on through here, and my house is the 10th house back here.
Bob?
I'm responsible for all of that. The person that built had zero responsibility for the damage that happened to my fence, to my pavers, to my property. So that, I mean, that was, I, I am hearing what you're saying and it is a big concern that people need to be held accountable for the property and I don't know how that actually works once, you know, once the building starts in place, if we're relying on, you know, that, that they're gonna do the right thing.
You have to rely, I mean, this is a plat process, has nothing to do in terms of the drainage or anything like that. It happens during the site plan process.
Sorry, I shouldn't have brought it up.
Oh, I knew you.
Anybody else have any questions? No, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to recommend that the planning board evaluate and submit a recommendation to city council on the Oakleaf commercial plat, uh, plat 19-02.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, all, all agree?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next.
Okay, this is, um, only an old, uh, Town Center Code amendment. Um, we are introducing a new architectural standard. May 29, 2019, city council had, held a work session and reviewed the Town Center Code in areas that needed clarification or direction. And during that work session, they had a discussion about the architectural style for commercial buildings in the town center and were acknowledging that maybe some of them need to be more modern or contemporary. Um, actually, I believe I included in your packet some articles just to say, um, give you some background or feeling about what's considered, um, modern, contemporary, eclectic. We're calling it a contemporary eclectic architectural standard. And then on August 21st, 2019, we had another work session and we presented to the city council these code amendments, suggested, we showed them, I, pictures of different, um, architectural styles and we identified primary elements for each style. That was one of the things that city council was looking for, was when staff reviews, um, architectural standards, what is it we're looking at? So we've tried to say, okay, that they have to meet at least three primary features of a standard to say, yes, that's, um, colonial revival, yes, that's Mediterranean, so that's sort of applies to all of them. There, so we were directed by city council to create a code amendment to require a minimum of three primary features of any style within the Town Center Pattern Book for Commercial Structures and added a new style, contemporary eclectic. Uh, there was a discussion on the word pastel and we've now struck that word out as an unacceptable color. And it's because the word, um, pastels appear to be subjective. And so pastel colors such as pale blues and greens, which already exist within the town center, would technically be permitted. So the new architectural design, contemporary eclectic, um, is, we've identified these characteristics and I would appreciate any input you have, if you have any other suggestions or whatever so far. That simplicity and clarity of forms, elimination of unnecessary detail, free-flowing curved lines connects indoor and outdoor spaces. We do acknowledge that they would be using glass, but not as a primary, um, only as maybe a feature. So you would have to have like a mix of glass and columns or other architectural features that eliminates that complete glass look, such as mirrored, things like that. At street level, windows should be a minimum of one foot above the sidewalk and at least 10 feet high. We're promoting active roofs, there's green roofs now these days, multi-level roofs. Intersperse use of materials that complement the surrounding area contrasting elements. So what you have, you have Appendix A and you'll see, um, towards the back is where the contemporary eclectic example is what would be incorporated into the town center. One of the pictures is actually from one of the students, I believe from FSU, had designed, um, some buildings and that was one of the buildings. Everybody keeps telling us about the restaurant over in Tampa, um, Ulealee, and that's another example just showing you what's considered more contemporary. So you have the strike through an underline, so appears more, just under the first page introducing that we now have six categories, not five. We didn't change anything to any of the other architectural standards until you got to the contemporary eclectic. And then you see, we, um, did say under general guidelines, uh, must incorporate a minimum of three primary characteristics from any of the architectural styles identified in Section 6 Town Center Architectural Design Pattern Book and the result can use, utilize a mixture of styles, just because there's been discussions sometimes, is, is that really just pure colonial revival? Is it pure Georgian? So we've done that. And then, as I said, we actually said not acceptable mirrored glass, so we did put that in. And then, as I said, we struck out pastels. I believe we also said that this, and I know it was an issue, saying that it really only applies to the commercial properties. There is still feeling of the old Florida, you know, within the town center and we're not gonna all of a sudden now see modern residential structures being built in the TCR. So I'm trying to think of how we did that, because we wanted to say? And so that's what the, um, design is.
Are you done?
Yep.
Okay. Susan? You have any questions?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. I hear you saying that it's for the commercial properties and I see that here in print, but, um, would that language also be added to the, the actual documents that builders will be seeing when they come into Oldsmar? That it's only for commercial properties that these apply?
Um, yeah, like I'm, I'm, to be honest with you, I'm looking at it and saying, I know we intended to do that and I'm trying to think of, how did we do that? Did I say it only in the staff report?
Um, I only saw it in the staff report, I could have missed it. By the way, this is a beautiful packet that was put together, I appreciate that.
Then I am, I personally would suggest, I mean, I'm, think that we should say something under the contemporary eclectic where it only applies in the TCCN and TCCR zoning districts, which are your exterior zoning districts. So I don't know how you feel about that.
Right, I would like that language to be added. I mean, I do think we have some issues with the residential properties and some of the places that have been built that aren't adhering to any particular style at all. That is a concern. And eclectic does lend itself to any style at all.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, I've kind of struggled with what word to use or identify. You didn't want to say, because everybody has visions in their minds when they hear modern or they hear contemporary or they hear, so eclectic does like, well?
My other question is, um, uh, right on page 1 in your summary report, um, 1, 2, 3, paragraph 4, where you talk about, um, it has to have a minimum of three primary features. I remember some conversation over the building that was going to be built on the, um, adjacent property to the library and one of the issues was that it didn't have enough of the?
Primary features.
But my recollection of that conversation is it would have fit under this guideline.
No, because if we felt that it wasn't having the three primary features, it wouldn't have fit.
Well, the way it was described, it, it would have had three primary features, because the, the person was, you know, defending what features it had and it actually would have met this standard.
Um, well, that person was keeping within one, um, style and if I recall, the discussion with that was when you looked at that one style, they may have had it, but it really wasn't like a, you know, one of the real key features of that style.
But according to this, they wouldn't have had to adhere to that one style, they could have done a combination of styles.
Yes, and it still has to be, it still will be approved by city council. What they're trying to say is they might leave staff to say, okay, we evaluated it and these are the three primary features that we believe, um, it, um, fits in with. But ultimately, um, because the, well, the CRA agency, which is actually our city council, they would be doing the approval.
Well, those were my concerns, I'm, I'm all about building and, um, I agree that it'd be nice to have some, this is commentary, but it'd be nice to have, you know, something unique for Oldsmar, because I think a lot of places are doing the same standard kinds of look for their town center. So, so I'm open to, to this, because I think it, it might lend itself to some very unique architecture.
You have any? Ross?
Uh, does this also encompass like any type of like parking structures also? Do with the parking, with like a parking garage also to follow?
Not really, but, um, I'm trying to think, with the parking garages in the CRA, I think there is, it's not in the architectural pattern book, it's in the Town Center Code. It does kind of say, you can't really just have like the open, you, you need to incorporate some type of facade type of feature so that you're not just seeing cars, you know, stacked upon each other. That's in another section of the Town Center Code, it's a little more specific on parking garages. I've seen actually, um, there's a hotel which ended up putting almost a canvas and it looks like it's like a canvas of Italy and it covers, it's like a mural which covers the parking structure. It can be changed out or whatever, it's actually pretty nice.
Okay. No further questions? Dale?
This is strictly for commercial buildings?
Um, I believe we should suggest that, yes.
Kind of looks like it could use containers for this one drawing down here in the bottom, people standing on the balcony. Can you do containers?
Students, no.
You're only, you, you've got four things here and you've gotta meet three of them? Intersperse use of materials that complement the surrounding area?
Turistics, and then you have elevations, primary exterior materials, roof, deep, on the next page, detailing doors and with windows, other unique features. That's sort of giving you a description of, you know, the buildings themselves, each one has a description.
So we're encouraging a fusion of modern and industrial in our commercial building? You want them to look industrial, no?
No, because that's why you're limiting certain type. Well, that, that is one of the features that can be in a modern or industrial type building. The brew pubs always like to take a warehouse and convert it into a brew pub. Well, we don't really have warehouse type industrial looking brew pubs and so some people were thinking, well, then they, maybe they'll build one.
And this came and was initiated by council?
It was through city council discussions, we then provided, um, pictures and examples and as a result of their discussion, came up with the amendments.
Well, what changed why we're adding this sixth, when we kind of always just stuck around with the ones we had because that was our feeling of the town?
Well, because I think pretty much everybody's been stuck on Mediterranean.
Quite a change in paradigm here.
Everybody's been stuck on Mediterranean. It's, because, you know, Georgian doesn't quite fit and maybe it's expensive, because they use a lot of brick and things like that. Of our styles, you can't do a bungalow. Of our styles, you can't do a bungalow, for the most part, commercial property. And so I was trying to say acknowledging that, you know, professional offices, if they're being built, wanna look a little bit more updated than the Mediterranean styles that we seem to keep getting. Because that was the easiest style for somebody to kinda fit into.
It's gonna look a little weird next to a Mediterranean style, or the Alamo Library, you know, when you put contemporary next to the Alamo, you know, which I always, I love the library.
I do too.
But I always thought it looked like the Alamo. And you're gonna mix this with that, it's gonna be kinda curious, but hey, we're evolving. It's a whole new Oldsmar. I don't have any other questions.
Bob? I'm basically gonna go along with that. I just, I I thought, I thought that we, the whole, I was around when the downtown area, when it was, when all that was done, and I kinda thought that we were trying to stick to the turn-of-the-century look, you know? Dinosaur. I know we are.
Well, I mean, the flood maps are changing that on us also. It really is. I mean, I, I know I'm being taped, but I said, it's not like we can stick a bungalow on, you know, stilts. It's just not gonna look right. But you know, you still wanna be able to try to keep some of the character, even though, I mean, the flood maps are driving a lot of things too. When they change, and our elevations are gonna need to go higher.
Yeah, I know. They've decided my property was gonna flood, because I've been living there for forty years, and it flooded. But anyway, I guess the feds know more about it than I do, so.
We've tried fighting.
I do, I do, you know, I never have been, and I, when you're talking about glass, I've never been a big fan of glass. I, I don't know, I just don't, I don't know, just not, to me, glass is it's dangerous. It's dangerous, especially here, you know? You know, it flies.
Make it thick enough, it'll be expensive enough.
True, but...
That's why it's called as a feature or expression. It's not supposed to be a whole glass wall.
But still, I guess we could require them to put in that glass that they use, they put in the buildings where the president goes and stays, you know? You know, when the president goes to a, when he goes to a new hotel or motel, they actually go in and install, you know, you know, taint-proof glass in those things. But anyway, I digress, I'm sorry. I, like I said, and I, I agree with the analogy of the, what you call shipping container. That's, I just don't, I don't, I don't like that at all. The ultra-modern, sharp lines.
I think we're evolving, we should allow shipping container architecture.
They are not permitted.
It's modern. It's the thing that's happening.
That's why we didn't use just the word modern. That's why we didn't use just the word contemporary.
Wait, does the word contemporary come to mind? Contemporary architecture?
John?
Gave you those articles to try to help you see what we had to look through, and, you know, try Googling it, it's...
Yeah, you get shipping container.
John, you got any questions?
Sure, yeah. So if, does eclectic mean that a colonial style can, can do a...
It can take a primary feature from a colonial style and intersperse it in it.
But let's say an existing building wants to do an addition, and then they go contemporary, so now they're eclectic, that would be allowed?
No, they'd still have to fall within the features of what we're saying is eclectic. There's only so much we can control in terms of what is and isn't allowed. And if they wanted to do that, city council probably could deny it and say that's not compatible with the neighborhood or the adjoining properties.
Okay. And then the other question is...
Because we, staff has that concern too, that all of a sudden you've got, you know, you're in a, let's even say next door, next door to City Hall, that you have seven different buildings, that none of them fit together, there's no flow or anything like that. And, you know, we wanna be able to prevent that also, that they all somehow have some common theme.
Yeah, I think, my concern was that eclectic opens you up to just about anything.
It's a word I used, it's, you suggest a different one to describe it, where it's just a word to try to describe the category.
Yeah. Is there a chance that they could go contemporary without the eclectic?
It's, they have to use the features of what we have in the, that we've identified. So if there's something that you suggest we should add or take out, that's why we're here. Because I said, it's just a descriptive word of the category. Couldn't think, because you didn't wanna say it was modern. You didn't wanna say it was contemporary. We wanted to say it was just a different, unique style, and that was a word I found. Quite frankly, it was.
Maybe we should pull the word eclectic, John.
Well, I was...
We want a tree definition, Webster's of eclectic.
Yeah, I think it's worth looking at.
It's a combination of styles. Eclectic means it's a hodgepodge, basically.
That's what I always known it to mean, is that...
Groovy, man.
You can just, it's kind of an open, open to whatever. I don't know how you can I don't know how easy it is to give guidelines when eclectic is used.
I've always described Oldsmar as eclectic, because we have five different styles of houses. So it's not like a West Chase, where you go and all the houses look the same. Eclectic, you have a variety, but I think within the confines of, you know, things that will be, like you were saying, compatible with the rest of the area.
Are you done, John?
The other thing is, is how do we put, I was a little, I was wondering, avoiding trending elements that would look dated in a few years? Like, how do you, how do you determine that?
Where do I say that?
It's the last, other unique features, last sentence, in the characteristic box.
That one's subjective. Actually, I'd have to say that would be a subjective type of thing. I guess if somebody, as you were saying, industrial, maybe all of a sudden, somebody's trying to do, what's that, like the tin type of look or whatever, which is the trend. We're trying not to have it then be all like that. So that's sort of a subjective. I could strike that if it bothers you.
I think it's hard to know what's gonna be outdated, because like, you know, colors that were popular.
No, that's a good point.
Colors that were popular ten years ago.
I'm looking for help.
Yeah.
Pastels.
Sometimes they looked good back then, and now they're totally out, you know, so.
If you want to suggest to strike that, that's totally appropriate for this board.
Would you have, were any, were any examples discussed?
In this?
Yeah.
Not really. I think, to be honest with you, I said sometimes we just kinda Googled to see how an architect was describing a modern or industrial and/or other cities or towns had in their codes. And quite frankly, I could have picked it up from somebody else's code and maybe not given as much thought as I needed to.
So like, for example, let's say someone wants to open up a daycare, and they wanna put, you know, triangle, square, round windows, just kinda be playful with it, and, you know...
I think it could be a feature. It wouldn't be like the whole building is, that's why we say like features with clash, you're not... It's gonna still be subjective in terms of what your tastes, what my tastes are. And ultimately, it's gonna be city council's decision to say, does that fit with the city? I mean, there has to be a point in time where somebody's gotta say yes or no.
So John, are you suggesting if they strike that sentence?
I'm, I'm taking a moment to think about it, because I, I don't know that if we strike it, it's still a subjective aspect. That mean they're still gonna, they still could say no to something that they don't particularly care for, right?
Yes, but like within guidelines also, I mean, they can't have carte blanche, say no. If an architect can come and say, I've used this, this, and this, they're gonna need to still be able to defend their position, council, as to why they're striking something, or subject to lawsuit, I assume.
Yeah, does anyone else have a thought on it? Because what I was thinking was that, okay, so on the one hand, if this is in here, that gives, gives city council a little bit of flexibility. If they wanna call something trendy, they can call it trendy, whether it is trendy or not. And if we strike it, then...
You've made it, yeah, now.
I've made it, we've made it harder for them to call something trendy and have anyone have a reason to say, to strike it.
And maybe just strike after elements, and just leave it, avoid trendy elements, and then it could be up, you know, because dated in a few years, what is a few years? I mean, I would just keep, avoid trendy elements.
I think that the elevation description where it says clean lines yet compatible with surrounding neighborhood, kind of protects us on trendy elements that are gonna be bizarre and more fit.
I think that helps too. The other thing is, is that maybe avoid trendy elements that haven't been, you know, proven out. Sometimes building...
Sometimes that's a good thing now.
Sometimes it is a good thing, but sometimes it, sometimes it causes buildings to have leaks, or this, or that. You know, there's, there's risks that are worth taking, there's risks that aren't. Just thinking out loud.
Unless you said avoid trendy elements that are dated.
Avoid trendy elements that that are already dated.
Right.
This is happening in town right now anyway. I mean, those big houses that are being built on lots next to little bungalows, gingerbread bungalows. Who was it that used the phrase McMans, I don't know where that comes from, McMansions? I think it was McGee, the former council member McGee, said that you have to be on guard against McMansions. And you see him popping up, I mean, here in, right down on Lee Street.
Well, this is commercial, right? So we should focus on commercial.
You're a victim of exactly what I'm referring to, from your drainage issue. The house behind you was like, you know, and there's little small houses next to it. And there's no way to protect against that, and that's a trendy element.
So how about City Hall? What would that qualify as?
City Hall is more colonial revival, I believe.
Because that looks kinda dated at this point. Maybe, maybe kind of is being polite.
Oh wait, I know who took that, probably.
So are you good? Can I ask questions now?
Absolutely.
Did you wanna change that sentence at all?
Maybe, maybe remove the part that looked dated in a few years.
Okay.
Avoid trendy elements or dated elements, maybe say something like that?
Just avoid trendy elements, period.
Or dated.
Or dated.
Trendy or dated.
Well, yeah, okay, yeah.
Can you read back what you're suggesting? Because it doesn't make sense.
He's saying avoid trendy elements, avoid trendy or dated elements.
Aren't we trying to be trendy, though, with these new buildings?
Well, not a hundred...
I mean, that's, that's how I interpret it. So if we are trying to be trendy or industrial, so you're saying to avoid being trendy? I don't...
No, it's good.
Well, it's already in there, so I...
But it can, I, to be honest with you, it can come out.
Yeah.
When you make a motion, somebody has to say either, you know, has recommend, whatever your recommendation is. Do you want the whole thing out? Do you want...
Then you vote yes or no. So if you put that in and you don't like it, or you change it, you don't like it, and you vote no. Or you vote yes if you do.
Sure. So where are we on this?
So it's almost like avoid trendy elements that would look dated? I mean, you could, instead of avoid trendy and dated elements?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Avoid trendy elements that are, yeah, look dated.
I would strike it, the whole sentence.
So strike the whole sentence.
That's my preference.
Yeah, because no one can predict that.
Right, nobody can predict it. It's too vague. I mean, even though it gives, it gives city council grounds to stand on a little bit, kinda vaguely.
But the compatibility helps the most.
Yeah, the rest of the stuff in that, we'll cover that. There's no real reason to have that sentence in, I don't think.
Very subjective.
I agree. I think it's a good idea.
Paul, what do you think?
I agree. Yeah, yeah, I have no problem with it, I think.
Yeah. John, it's your, your idea, so.
Striking is sounds good.
Agreed. Then just go ahead and strike that, and call that. I'll ask questions now?
Okay.
Okay, when you said the glass should be at least a foot off the ground and at least ten feet high, what if they only have an eight-feet cylinder or something like that?
Good point.
Wondering how that was gonna work.
But that's kinda short.
Commercial building?
For a commercial, that's awful short.
For the single-story, eleven feet, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't think about commercial, I was thinking...
We're trying, so we didn't want, you know, floor-to-ceiling glass, pick the foot. Is the answer two feet? I don't know.
No, foot's good. It's the other end I was looking at, ten foot.
Because we actually have tried to avoid that on Tampa Road, where we've said no floor-to-ceiling glass, and have made new walls, and Thornton's actually had to put in a fake front in front of their windows.
If the windows are less than ten feet, that's not acceptable? Is that what it's indicating? If you had an eleven-foot facade and the windows were, you know, six feet or eight feet?
Well, would it be better to say no more than ten feet? Which is really what we're...
They'd probably even more like it.
Oh, yeah.
I mean...
Instead of at least just saying no more.
You know, like, take, take, for example, the drawing over here, where is it? This one, I mean, this, this side of the building is, has, has large windows. You know, that, that could be a...
So that would be, if you said no more than ten, because of the foot, you're eleven up from the street level.
Right.
Yeah, I think a minimum and a maximum would probably be a good thing to have there, because you wouldn't want them to have little slanty, small windows either.
Sometimes it makes sense to. I mean, if you're, I mean, you take...
But that might be a primary feature they don't pick.
As long as it's, is this characteristics of primary features? Is that what we're talking about?
Pick a primary feature of something.
From this list? Okay.
So we're assuming the building's gonna be higher than eleven feet tall, the front, the front first floor, right?
At least the first floor. Or any floor, really.
Street level only is what this one's referring to.
Yeah, but is that say, that specified in here?
At street level, windows should be a minimum of one foot above the sidewalk, and at least ten feet high. So it's dealing only with the street level side.
You're talking no awnings.
Why?
I mean, how could you put an awning like eleven foot high? What good would it do? And, I mean, are...
Well, that's why I said maybe that the least is not the correct word. Maybe it should be no more than, or...
It seems like too limiting a guideline, you know, if you have a window, one foot, ten feet, period. That's all you get.
Okay, so we could just strike the tight?
Yeah, one feet above the sidewalk, and, you know, unlimited at that point, right? Except you can't have the whole front of the building glass.
No.
So that has to be a break point.
But you could, if you don't limit it, you would, you could have a feature, which, I don't know, might look nice, of a glass three stories high, but it's got columns or, you know, something to separate it.
And your second floor will have that break point, you know, that you're gonna require.
My point was, it may not. I don't know how structurally they would do that, but, you know, the front could be all of a glass.
If it's a primary feature, then I think making the windows flexible, but saying a minimum of one foot off the sidewalk, and just leaving it, that might be a good way to go.
Okay. How does everybody feel?
What do you think, Dale? Just striking the ten-foot part?
Yes, oh, yes.
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we can do that.
No, this is helpful.
Now, now, my comment, we have all these different styles, and you could put... And you could put theoretically a Mediterranean next to a colonial, next to a contemporary building, have a mess.
You could theoretically.
Yeah.
I mean, why do we have to have all these approved, I mean?
Well, okay, now, you can strike out bungalow, I would presume for commercial. Um, because that one's going to be difficult to do for a commercial structure. Uh, Florida vernacular the same way. Um, I haven't had too many Queen Anne's coming in.
Sounds like Queen Anne.
But you could have a feature of a Queen Anne where it's, you know, an athletic building takes some fret work or, or things like that.
Three features?
Huh?
Right, 14.
Right, but they could take a feature from a Queen Anne where it's the fret work or, or some type of prominent feature. So the city, quite frankly, with the commercials, been left with colonial revival and Mediterranean. This building probably be more of an example of colonial revival. And most architectures have gone the Mediterranean route for lack of any other choice.
And remember line one of elevations, compatible with the surrounding area.
Yeah.
So that, that would kind of help with your mess.
Yeah. Those city councils.
Be a little bit of control there.
Right.
Depend on how eclectic the new council is.
Right, right, exactly.
The other thing is, is that you could have a house that's on, on Tampa Road, for example, that's been rezoned commercial just because the location, someone makes it a law firm and it could fit Florida vernacular or something like that, right? I mean, that's.
Well, this isn't Tampa Road, this is, well, it's Tampa Road only in the CRA.
Right.
This is only the CRA. We don't have any architectural standards other than Tampa Road corridor for houses or whatever else outside of the CRA.
Thank you.
Did I not hear the CRA is going to go away in six years?
Um.
Did I hear that alluded to at the TIF meeting?
Well, the CRA has a, I think it's a 30 year limit, that's by statute. And in order, and it's, it's more for the TIF funds type of thing, for where we have to share. We don't have to share the, the taxes with county right now. But when it expires, then it's just like any other taxing district in the city. And so then the county gets their fair share again.
Will that affect our future site for ideas like this?
No, this is, this is our town center code. It's not, the CRA is a legal special district set up. Um.
But you mentioned it on Tampa Road, so I did, I thought I heard it, them saying it.
That would be, it's going to be more, that would be more from a money standpoint in what, in effect. And then you wouldn't have a, you would then just have city council, you wouldn't have a CRA agency. We're a CRA administrator.
Do we also have any more questions?
I, I had just one.
Go ahead.
Um, it, it kind of feels to me that a lot of this is stemming from that we did vote to allow breweries. And it's.
I think that helped trigger it, was like the look and feel you wanted.
You know, breweries were, were a little behind that.
That started the discussion, I think that happened and then, um, probably some other sites that have gone before city council also made them say, well, same old, same old.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just bringing that up because, you know, we build this industrial looking thing for a brewery. Um, you know, then, then what do you do with that?
Well, I don't, no, if it's going to be pure industrial, it would have a feature, you know, some of the breweries aren't, you know, the ones that are in warehouses, yeah, they're just taking the warehouse and moving right in. It's going to, could have a feature of an industrial look in, in parts, but not, we're not talking, you know, on, up in Douglas Road and those type of buildings.
Also has.
Or not, we may, no, somebody may never use this style, I don't know.
Reckon we'll find out.
It'd be more popular than any other style.
A little more flexibility to be creative.
Everybody done? No questions?
No questions.
I'll entertain a motion. Don't get the, add the words about.
You could just say as recommended.
As recommended?
With the corrections.
I'll make an attempt. I, I recommend we move forward with CA 1901, City of Oldsmar, city, city, or Center Code amendments to provide for standard contemporary eclectic architectural standards with the, with the changes that we recommended, including the strike of at least 10 foot high windows and the strike of avoid trendy elements that would look dated in a few years.
And the introduction of the TCCN and TCCR zoning districts. Those are the two commercial zoning districts.
Should I, should I say that?
Yeah.
Tom, where is that? I didn't see where that was.
Limited to the TCCN and.
Limited to the TCCN.
I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, all four?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Oh, entertaining adjournment.
Boarding order?
Okay.
Is there some discussion about six o'clock? Did I see that in an email somewhere?
There was, it's not going to work for this board, unfortunately.
Oh.
And it will remain at 6:30.
I didn't see that on modification via email, so glad I brought it up. Nothing else.
I'd like to also introduce Jared Buckman, who are your, our new second alternate member.
Hi, Jared.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Where'd you come from?
He was here before anybody.
Yeah, I know, but I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know we were running an alternate up.
Who did we lose?
I didn't get the email.
Oh, okay.
You get the memo, Kathy.
Welcome, congratulations.
Jared's my neighbor, right down on Washington, on the corner.
Oh, it's a cabal.
Cabal.
So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I move.
I second.
Move and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're done.
Thanks, Susan, for the healthy discussion.
Yeah.
Well, that was more fun than you. See you in six months.
Yeah, baby.
I like the interim.
I can recycle them if you like.
Ooh, they didn't take long printing these up.
Oh, look at that.
So how did that man break his leg in three flights?
Thank you, ma'am.
Look at this one. I'll take him.
That's Miss Gannon's husband.
Then I better get busy, we're behind the times.
How should we just talk? We had to go for memorial service to come.
I know. You know, the guy that had the big, uh, uh, Halloween graveyard down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, it's now got Christmas drinks on it.
A hundred miles offshore or something. The wave came, the boat went up and he went down and busted his leg really badly.
I would share the meaning, I, and I expressed my.
Versus bank robbery and then he's breaking his leg.
You know, I, I expressed my thought about the, you know.
I can recycle them for you if you want. I always get a nice smile when I live here. Yeah.